What's the summary version?
Let's forget it.
No, we're like an elephant that we don't forget.
Well, and that squad is usually a bit of a meter. I should be prepared to accept that.
But simply.
I agree.
I don't know.
See, I don't.
Steve, one minute now, is that okay? Are we ready to go?
Yes.
Anyway, okay. I'll take care of that. We've paid for it.
All right.
We already talked about that.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't know about that until today. Nice, huh?
Yeah.
I just.
As Amber would say, it's what they vote.
Well, no, that's my thing.
I don't have much of a choice.
Did you mean, what did I just say?
I want people to see me. I gotta.
That's my thing.
You're like my face. What can you tell us?
And sometimes.
That's why she's called. Hello, sir. And you and I will be next.
Armored Hill was what you were asking.
Send one short. Mr. Manager, I'll play. Him and I will eat my own.
(laughing).
Okay, Steve, you're ready to go.
Okay, there you go.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 3:00 PM on Thursday, September 22nd, 2016, time for the regular meeting of the Gateway Services Community Development District Board of Supervisors. Please join us standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. If you have a noise maker like this, please put it on mute for the balance of the meeting. If you wish to speak to the board, please fill out a form near the door and give it to our manager, who will hold up his hand to indicate who gets the form. Mr. Manager, are people wanting to speak to the board this afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Would you please proceed?
First up is Jane Schaefer. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jane Schaefer, Pelican Preserve. Another three weeks has passed since your last meeting, and your Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee has not publicly reversed the two-year-old action telling our residents to drive in the car truck lane. The Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee has only the power that you have given to them, yet without your authority, they have repeatedly insisted that the residents driving golf carts must drive in the car truck lane. This, even though the President of P-PAC came here several weeks ago asking permission to enter into an agreement with Fort Myers Police Department to help slow down our traffic, cars and trucks on our streets. The stubbornness of some of these people is just beyond belief. If one of our older residents is injured, the attorneys will come right here asking you what has happened.
Thank you, Jane. Hold on just a second, please. Any questions for things? Thank you very much. Mr. Manager?
Next up is George Huskemi.
Huskamp?
I'm sorry.
Close.
Close.
I know someone.
I thought mine needed to put.
When I was growing up, I would get mail at the house, not I have a family, was George Sushmap, S-U-S-H-M-A-P. This one almost tops it.[281.81][281.83](laughing). My name is George Huskamp. I live in Pine Crest. A very short question. I noticed on the agenda that there is a maintenance report that's going to be out today and is to be handed out at the meeting. I was wondering how those of us in the audience get information that's out, or is it only?
Here, you may have mine.
Thank you. Now I don't feel left out here.
Pete, does that finish your presentation?
Yes, sir. I just.
Thank you, Mr. Husk.
I'd just like to have the information.
Mr. Manager?
Up next is Ed Tinkle.
Ed Tinkle, 111-80, Ben Pine Drive. Steve didn't mention it, but I have three items. One, the water meter replacement project. Two, the Pond 132 easement issue. And three, the issue of flowway number four. I don't see anybody from WCI here, so we'll have to just wing it on those last two.
That's, that's the old WCI?
(laughing). Lennar slash, Lennar slash WCI, the $650 million WCI. Anyway, first thing I want to start with is the engineering performance evaluation report on the water replacement project. I forwarded to all of you earlier this week a copy of a report that I've spent the last three months in preparing. I'm very concerned about where our water meter project is going. And I want to read into the record the executive summary that I prepared because I'm not prepared to read, speed read 16 pages of the report itself. The Gateway CDD potable water and irrigation system in many areas of the community are well over 25 years. Water metering is essential for conservation management and requirement for loss control, accounting, and rate making. The American Waterworks Association recommends a planned water meter replacement and testing program and suggests that residential and commercial meters be replaced and are tested every 12 to 15 years. For all practical purposes, since the beginning in the late 1980s, the CDD has not implemented any planned water meter replacement or meter testing program. After a year of review of water meter replacement options in September 20, September 2014, the Gateway CDD contracted with Fortline, Inc. to replace over 6,400 meters for Gateway residential commercial properties at to a tune of about $1.25 million. A post-project audit prepared by the meter manufacturer, Zener USA subcontractor to Fortline, revealed over 1,200 problems with the 6,200 to 6,300 meters that had been installed through May of 2016. Problems ranging from something simple as broken meter lid pits to items requiring total replacement of the meter reading and transmitting devices. These incorrect meter readings are causing erroneous bills to Gateway residents. Over 500 of the installations have issues considered to be significant. All of these problems are causing the CDD to incur additional internal and external expenses to investigate and rectify the problems. The relationship between CDD and Fortline was tainted from the beginning because the outset of an inherent conflict of interest. Severn Trent Services Environmental, ST, is the district's management firm responsible for CDD management, operations, and financial accounts. ST also was named the subcontractor to Fortline for the installation of all meters. It is clearly not in the best interest of the CDD for ST to be a profit-making entity in the water meter project while at the same time being in control of the CDD's overall management and purse strings. This arrangement is flagrant violation of ST's management contract with the CDD, which expressly prohibits any such conflict of interest. Simply passing a resolution to transfer the duties to staff to avoid this issue was not the proper answer. Meter installations were poorly carried out by ST, and many field errors have been discovered. A pilot project was conducted on 240 residential properties where both the portable and irrigation meters were replaced. Upon completion, the meters were observed for only 60 days. While the project was described as successfully completed, installation problems were observed but did not stop the board from proceeding with the full replacement program. Two partially unwarranted change orders were approved by the CDD issued to Fortline during the project. The CDD's billing manager, who was hired in January 2016, made a diligent effort to document all the problems and bring them to the attention of all concerned. However, she was unable to work in an atmosphere of unprofessionalism, unethical behavior, and the above stated conflict of interest, and resigned after three months. Her three-ring binder of documents and emails pertaining to the project's problems is available for public inspection here at the office. The CDD's Board of Supervisors, its attorney, and Severn Trent are accountable for condoning the conflict of interest and are totally responsible for the management associated with the implement, mismanagement associated with the implementation of this project. Urgent action is needed now as the combination of the above problems have resulted in damages to the district which could easily exceed $100,000. It is recommended that CDD immediately arrange to have Fortline and its two subcontractors, Severn Trent and Zener USA, to appear before the next meeting of the board and explain how the above problems happened and how they are to be rectified. The board should also consider an extended, requesting an extended warranty from Fortline as the meter installation and reading problems continue to occur. Lastly, the CDD should identify all its additional costs incurred by its staff, its engineer, and its attorney related to the poor construction and recover these expenses from Fortline, Inc. I've got several recommendations. One, immediately request the meeting with Fortline and its subcontractors to try to find out what, what happened. I don't know if you know it, but there is nothing more simple in the utility business than a water meter replacement project. This is not rocket science. What happened here should not have happened. Two, CDD staff should immediately establish damages incurred due to Fortline's failure to comply with project specifications, including staff time and expenses, engineer expenses, and attorney expenses. I've interviewed staff. Three of your staff have spent 50% of their time since January researching and working on the problems simply because Fortline, Zener, and ST wouldn't show up and do their job. That equates alone to $94,000 in wasted Gateway residents' money. They should be doing something else. Three, request Fortline to grant an extended warranty of at least five years for all the meters placed in Gateway. Four, initiate immediately an AWWA bench test of 10 selected meters that you have problems with and verify that this problem, because I do not know the answer to this one, is our problem in the meters? Is it the software, or is it the components, the stealth technology? But we've got to know the answer to that. I know, I just got my bill. I opened it this morning and about crap. I couldn't believe, and I use water as about as consistent as anybody, every month, month in, month out, we just same number, except in Christmas when I have a house full of people. Mine jumped up 5,000 gallons this last two-month period, 110 bucks. Something is wrong, and at the same time, I was told I had a problem with my meter. I think there's a problem.
Ed, your time is up, please.
Can I continue, Bill?
Please close it up.
May I continue? Thank you. Initiate the test. Authorize Tetra Tech to review the specifications and the RFQ to determine that the additional work that was approved by this board, i.e. change orders one and two, was legitimate. I'm of the opinion that the majority of those two change orders, and I do not know why, are totally unwarranted. You guys authorized, and we talked about this, you authorized a turnkey project, and you stated right in all the documents that this was to be minimal staff time. We've got a lot of time that our staff is spending out there on this that should be paid and compensated back to the district by the end of the month.
Ed, your time is up. We thank you very much for the work.
Can I, can I continue, Bill, with, I'm going to change to a different subject, the ponds? Can I go to the ponds?
Are you, wait, hold on just one second.
Yeah.
Are you finished for the moment with the meters?
Yes, sir.
Well, the Chair would like to thank you for the work that you have done. The board and the Chair are going to need some time to review your report.
I understand that.
I want to wait until all of the meters are installed and working properly before we get back to this. But as I said, I want to, I want to thank you for the work you've
done. Bill, I don't have any problem with that with one exception or one request. You have a retainage right now on the contractor, I'm sorry, you have a retainage on the contractor of $120,000, 10%.
Nothing's going to be done and.
No release of the retainage.
No, that's correct.
I would appreciate that. Okay, thank you. I'll switch to the next subject. Next item, and I don't know how this happened. I don't know what's going on. I've talked to Tony at the last couple of meetings, Pond 132 and the flowway. I was shocked in talking with David Caldwell. I have thought for the last three years that our only issue with Pond 132 and getting our vendors, our staff, our people over to there, which is simply somebody didn't want to spend the money to level the road and put in the stone.
You're talking about the one on the west.
Area nine, area nine, yes, sir. Area nine. David about blew me away the other day. We've never had an easement to that place, and in fact, he can't get one. We have accepted a pond, and Tony, I don't know how in the heck this happened. How could we accept maintenance of a pond we have? I, for the last 15 months, have been illegally trans, walking on somebody else's property. This isn't right, guys. How in God's name did we get this?
Just hold on a minute.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, one of the issues in that, on area nine, as you recall, WCI wants us to accept the deed to the remainder of that and to also accept the transfer of the operating permit to the district. And the access is one of the issues that we indicated needs to be addressed and provided before we take title to that remaining large tract of land. And we do have a, we have a temporary access easement that is not favored by the agencies, and the agencies have another preferred route. And that is something that we've been working on for quite a while, to try to get that resolved and a permanent easement, contrary to Ms. Montgomery's assertions.
Well, here's my problem, is I'm on that pond committee, and I'm working on this, and I'm getting my neck way out on a limb dealing with these vendors that we've got that we're in a bid process right now. And I'll be danged if I'm going to put my name on something of telling them to go and do maintenance on an area, then threaten them with a fine and/or penalty for not payment, and I don't have a legal way to get them on that property.
I don't think we're going to stall that thing today.
I understand that.
The Attorney, if.
Well, David, what I wanted to pass on, Bill, is that David Caldwell is ready to have a meeting with us and get this thing ironed out.
I think that's a great idea.
I think I have a solution. The solution is, is that they will pay for it. We go in, condemn the property, and do eminent domain for the easement, and they pay for all the costs.
We'll let.
Okay.
You and the Attorney and David.
But do we have a, Tony, do we have a, we have a temporary easement to that pond?
Yes, it runs through a development and runs through a conservation area that South Florida is not wild about.
When I asked David.
So we can't, it's, it's a temporary easement, but for lack of a better term, it's nonusable.
When I asked David, if I could go on there, he says you're doing it at your own risk.
Hold on a second.
It's the temporary easement that was intended to be temporary, contrary to Ms. Montgomery's assertion that this was the final easement. It says right in the document that it's a temporary easement. I highlighted that in my communications with her. That is not the optimal one. I mean, it's one that's been used historically, as I understand it. And.
And Ed, 132 is not part of our phase one?
I'm sorry?
130.
I'm talking about right now, Doug, pond testing.
So this is not, this is not an immediate need, but we do need to.
Pure pond testing.
Okay.
Pure pond testing. And it's a major, major cost item on our contract.
Yeah, okay.
The next one, similarly, flowway number four, and this one gets even more complicated. Nobody seems to be able to find an easement, and this is probably going to get real interesting now that we have Lennar back in the ballgame. Yeah, apparently from.
Describe number four for us, please.
I'm sorry?
That location, please.
It is the flowway open channel ditch that comes from Stony Brook over to Pond 130. Right now, there is a dedicated easement on the FPL side, but as I understand it.
That's the one that hasn't been maintained? It's on the left-hand side as we're.
Well, left or right. Neither one of them.
It goes straight, it goes through. Yeah, okay, I got you.
That's it. Margaret and I went out there and walked and thought we'd get into snakes. The issue is on the 132 side. Apparently, David, again, could not find a recorded easement of what appears to be a description of 130-foot wide, 65 feet on both sides of the center line of that ditch. That's part of our maintenance deal. The bigger problem is, is that if we even had that easement, unless you have a helicopter, how you going to get to it? David is willing to grant an easement off of Gateway Boulevard from Hidden Links, that's that little triangular piece of property that is right now totally encumbered by exotics. He would be willing to go in there and give us an easement to cut a path back, but he said, what's it going to do for you if you get back there and you don't own the land or have access to the land in the first place?
Who owns the land?
WCI owns the land on the, well, on both sides, on both sides. But at the time, evidently, I don't know how Lennar got into this game, but.
I guess correction, and I think there's some email exchanges on this, and Tyler can correct me if I'm wrong. If I recall correctly, Tyler indicated that the district does have a drainage easement for that flowway four. Is that correct, Tyler? It's a thumbs up for the record.
Yes.
You found one? David, David couldn't find one, I couldn't find.
I think that was an email exchange. I'm not sure if you got all of these.
He knows the system better than I do. But the bottom line is, is that, again, we need to have a document to be able to get our equipment, not our equipment, our vendor's equipment, off of Gateway Boulevard down to a level without dropping off a slope to be able to get the equipment back to maintain that flowway. If you look at it going across the bridge on Gateway Boulevard and look to your left, look to your west, Margaret shaking her head, it's pathetic. It's absolutely pathetic.
I think we've got, we've got the pictures.
Okay, the last item I've got, and this one, I just found about 10 minutes before the meeting, and you were smiling about it while I go, that's the WCI purchased by Lennar. I'm very concerned about the road turnover. Where are we at, as I understand it, talking to Johnson Engineering, I'm sorry, not Johnson, Holmontis Engineering, Rick Ryelansky, everything is done except the title opinion work. What do we need to do? The last thing I want to do is have this buyout, this sale, because I've already got floor burns from the bankruptcy with that company. The last thing I want to do is to have a reason to stall the turnover of these roads to the county. And what do we need to do to make that happen quickly?
We have the draft survey and also the draft title commitments, and I've not yet had a chance to review them in their entirety. And I have not even seen yet the, I've not been provided WCI surveys. I guess, I don't know if we have those or not.
Ryelansky tells me you've got everything. I don't know that to be true.
As to the district segments. I have the draft survey we got last week as to the district segments.
Well, my reason for bringing it up is that I worked a lot, and so did a lot of other people, worked really hard, and implementing this, including you all, of spending the $1.4 million to make this happen, I'd hate to have this purchase, this buyout, this whatever you call it, affect us to where we can't get these roads turned over as quickly as possible.
That'd be my priority to push it along.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you very much for the, thanks for the time.
Mr. Manager, I'm sorry, there was a, excuse me, you didn't ask us if we wanted to ask Ed it? I'm so sorry.
But it seemed that we wanted to get rid of it.
No, we don't. That's. Would you put your microphone down so the folks can hear you?
Hello? I think it might be a good idea to bring Chris up to the podium and put him under fire, find out some progress regarding this thing. If I, if we've.
Which thing, please?
Yeah, the meters. Your favorite topic.
I don't want to go, I don't want to get into that right now.
Well, there's a couple of questions that.
It's too complicated to add to right.
Wait a while. Too complicated? Bill, you said that we've got all the intelligence right up here on the board to be able to handle all of the problems of the world at the last meeting, or was it two meetings before?
You're being.
The public, I'm being facetious because you're being controlling and because this is something that all five of us should be well-versed in, because all five of us deal with people in our communities. So we should know when we've got something of this financial magnitude where we're at. And we should also, I mean, you just announced that we're not going to give back any of the retainage that's there, but how many other people on the board knew that?
Well, let me just ask one question to April and Chris. When you do your, your update, because you're, I think you have a spot now on the agenda, were you planning to cover any updates on the meter project?
I had on my update to talk about installation of the rest of the meters, but I addressed the question.
Yeah, because. Can we wait for the?
Well, it's also in the minutes of the August meeting, and it's referenced in there on lines 186 through 194, so I had notes on it there.
Yeah.
Where are we going to open this up?
Well, I would say let's wait for Chris's, for Chris's report if we want to ask him directly, or if there's something we need to ask Ed.
Let's do that.
Is that acceptable, just so we can move?
And then also understand that when and if we get into the acceptance of the minutes, that I've got eight lines of the minutes that I want to.
Okay.
Thank you, Ed, for now. Okay, Mr. Manager, is that all of the folks?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we're ready for the consent agenda, item three, A through D. It appears that Mr. Newbauer wants to talk about item A, the minutes of the August 4th meeting. Is that so?
True.
Are there other items that board members want to speak to?
No.
Mr. Newbauer, please direct our attention to the place in the minutes where you'd like to go.
It's 186 through 194, and it's 206 through 208. But again, this involves Chris, and it involves April.
Is it corrections to the minutes?
Is this, yeah, is this corrections to the minutes?
It's questions regarding it. I'll approve it based upon the fact that I'm going to ask questions based upon those, those lines.
Right.
No typos, just.
Yeah. We can come back to it if you.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items 3A through 3D.
Thank you, it's a second.
I have a second.
Now I have a motion in a second. Any conversation on any of those items?
3B, there's one question I wanted to ask on 3B.
Please do it.
Page 19. Flag, there seems also to be some things that are ending at the end of this month. Nobody's raised a question on that. My question is flag football. And I know I'm going to hear from Bill, we're not ending flag football. I want to ask this question in an open forum. Is there anybody on this board that is a principal of the current for-profit flag football?
I'm not.
I.
Nope.
You can answer by not answering. Okay, that's good.
I, I'm a coach. I coach for flag football.
You don't have a principal interest. I'm.
No, I'm, I'm.
Sure that that's.
No, no.
Clearly.
I don't have a principal interest in any, any of the leagues or programs.
Then my other question is, why isn't anybody bringing up the fact that the property vehicles and workmen's compensation ends at the end of this month? Reference page 21.
Oh, on our main, on our main program. I would, I would have, I suspect, this is my first year going through it, but I suspect that that's an automatic renewal, but I will reach out. I think Diane, Diane's not here, but I'm, I think that she's already working with them on a renewal.
Obviously, it's important.
Yes, yes.
So I think that, would that be something that the rest of the board thinks that being insured, primary insurance, that at least we should hear about that sometime before the 30th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Same thing to do with waste management. They won't be picking up the garbage after the 30th.
What page you're on now, please?
Waste management is on page 24, item two, or three, excuse me. So we won't have any garbage pickup after the end of the month. Just a couple of questions.
It's, that's an auto renewal.
Okay. And are, regarding the insurance, are we going to see if there's a better quote?
The Florida League of Cities generally has the very best rates.
How much do we pay a year, though? A lot of money, huh? Just a thought.
Okay. Are you finished with the items on the consent agenda?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, 5-0, Mr. Manager. Discussion items 4A, the operations report, April?
April White, you're operations manager. One of the things that I wanted to be sure that I updated you on is we do have a meeting scheduled with Joe DiCervo. We will be meeting with him on the 29th and the 30th. We've all got our calendars blocked for that, and we're working through the details as far as setting up the purchase order and the final scheduling, but I think it's going to be the afternoon of that Thursday, and then spend the full day with him on Friday.
What was the dates again, April? I'm sorry.
The 29th and 30th. It's next Thursday and Friday.
Okay. So, and I'll just say to that, I, I've reached out to Joe personally so I can set up time because I wasn't part of the original review. But I would say if there's, if there's any additional information you have around the org structure or any issues, I would relay that information to Joe. So, because he's going to, we need to get some things done in that, in that meeting, and Margaret will represent us, but we don't have any way to sit down and communicate that with Margaret, so.
Please proceed.
Was there any specific questions we had on the operations manager's update?
Yep. Item four.
Item four.
Just backing up to what Mr. Banks was saying, the idea of board members providing information as to what they want to present to Mr. DiCervo. Again, it would be something that would go to April, I would submit, and then she can provide that to Mr. DiCervo so he has that. And again, we don't want to run into an issue where there's responses back on those comments. And again, we don't want to run into an issue where there's responses back on those comments or suggestions that other board members may have.
Can Doug ask his questions and have April respond to the entirety?
I can-
No, I, I, when I heard you, I understood what you're indicating is asking board members to provide items that they want provided to Mr. DiCervo.
Yeah, so they can't have direct contact with Joe?
Yeah, I think, but I think it's best to send them all to April. April will compile them, have them there.
Wow.
I think he, he or Margaret, or, well, Margaret's gonna get to talk to him directly, but I think Bill, I know, wants to talk to him and-
Oh, the conversation's different. It's separate conversations. Okay, that's different.
He was waving me off already, but-
No, the separate conversations are fine. I didn't understand to be separate conversations. That's fine.
Okay, so then it'll be disseminated through April. Wouldn't that be-
I have a little bit of an issue with that, just because part of the organizational conversation has to do with a position that April may be considered for.
But through all public record, once they're published and-
I know, that's fine, but if, so, well, I think we need, just need to determine, like, because I'm gonna, I'm scheduling, scheduling time with Joe so I can talk to him. Uh, and there will be some information that I want to send to him, but I would, Tony, I think what our approach should be is to reach out to Joe directly. If there's issues with communications electronically, then maybe what the expectation would be, if you want to, um, uh, to pass information along to Joe that you do it over, uh, over a phone conversation. Would that be acceptable?
Yes, and as long as he doesn't communicate to any other board member, what another board member's indicated.
Okay.
I think we've got a plan.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Can we get to item number-
Number four.
Steven-
I'm done.
My guy. What do you think about number four? About paying three hundred and fifty dollars to get QuickBooks? Take it, I'll, I'll give you a minute or two to review this.
No, I, I'm aware of it. Um, I'll, I'll put it this way. I'm not against QuickBooks. What I have mentioned to April is, is that, um, I would like to review all the processes first and work with them and understand it first. Um, and we've talked about that a little bit. Uh, the current software has an AR module as well. So we're, we're going to investigate this first.
Yeah, so the fingers can go this way rather than like so.
Yes, I, I think that the important piece that April has identified is that we need to spend some more time reviewing processes, and it's not just revenue, AP, fixed assets, kind of to go through them all. It's, it's a good idea to do, do that on a regular basis. And this is a good opportunity, and that's what April has identified.
Good. Do we have those? I think we should start building those regular routines. So we're gonna do it now, but let's set some ongoing, uh, review processes and quarterly or whatever.
Ask Steven what he recommends for what should be the-
Yeah, and he and April can work through that. I mean, I don't-
Sure. Uh, I mean, at, at the minimum would be an annual basis, you want to review all your processes. We tie it into year-end. However, um, it doesn't, it shouldn't always, it should be an ongoing process.
Okay, so how about quarterly?
Yeah, well, that would be my recommendation, is you do an annual review of, of your year, but you have a quarterly review to sit down and you do a review of, you know, expenditures and, and from a staff perspective, you break it down, uh, just to make sure we're all on the same page, and you do an internal audit, so our processes versus theirs, you sync them up, so we're still in line.
And then you also tie into that training.
Yep.
Because that's the, you know, reviewing is one thing, but the upgrade, you know, the ongoing training, um, is, you know, even more important, if you want to say that, because otherwise, you gotta make sure, even if you have good processes, it doesn't mean everyone is comfortable with them.
And I'm surprised we haven't had that already in place, to be honest. That should have been a recommendation for the management company years ago.
So you'll have that, will it be in a written format, someplace where we have a reference to that?
Yes, yes, we're talking written.
In case Lennar hires you away and, you know.
I understand.
How valuable you are. All right. So speaking of number five, and processes in place, plan review, development fee collection process. And I wrote down, after reading those couple of sentences, and hopefully some of the other board members did too, and I said, so is there no evaluation during the turnover format process that's been going on for the past twenty-five years?
Turnover process has been going on-
Yeah, look at number five, Bill.
I'm looking at it.
So in other words, we talked about for quite some time, capital assets, CIP program, yada, yada, yada. Is there no process in place, and if there is, there certainly should be?
There's gotta be a checklist.
Mr. Newbauer, there is, there is no process.
There is no process.
There is, there is no process. ST hasn't recorded any of, of our book balances for the assets conveyed to us. So we are backtracking. The reason why we struggle with capital improvement plan, planning, is because we don't have anything compiled. The process that we're missing is when these assets are conveyed to us, there's a book entry to be done. We're getting the information from, from the engineer, with the engineer's report. We're not doing anything with it. It's not being booked, it's not being compiled on an inventory list, it's not being managed properly.
Okay, so then the question obviously is, so what do we need to do?
We're working, we're working on establishing that process.
Okay.
We're going to backtrack on everything that has not been conveyed to us at this point, so everything active on the board right now, we are going to backtrack and capture all of that. That's gonna be our starting point.
All right, but still, when will the process that you're trying to backfill, when will the actual process be in writing, someplace for reference that anyone in the future or tomorrow could go to?
For a policy. When are we going to adopt a policy? When am I going to bring the board a policy to-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I do not have a date for certain on that.
How about trying to grab one?
Well, for starters, we have, we are, again, we are short-staffed. In managing, identifying the problems of what we are, we're, we're doing right now is identifying problems. And it's a slow process to actually drill down on all of the documentation involved and working on developing a procedure, a policy for you to adopt. A strong policy that we can move forward and say, okay, this works, and this is what we're gonna move forward with, and this is what we need to adopt into the rules. Actually drilling down on developing that policy takes time. Right now, we're doing all of the busy work just to figure out what all is on the plate, what are we missing, what do we have to do to establish that process?
Okay, then maybe I'll ask it in a backwards way. What's your number one priority right now, and when will it be done, of anything?
The number one priority?
Yeah.
Well, my number one priority, I really have two that I've been trying to, three. I have a list on my desk, if you'd like me to go get it.
No, what's your, what's your three?
Um, I've been working on the park. We've been trying to coordinate the park issues, uh, because that was, that was a ninety-day deadline, and of course, I told you that we were, the, the cameras and the light bulbs, we're gonna take some additional time. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow for that.
Is that what you're asking? Is what is her, her workload priority list?
I'm trying to figure out, everything keeps, it's, it's a work in progress, but we never seem to get an end.
Well, there's a reason for that. I mean, we've got one person, and clearly, we, we're short-staffed. So what, what I'm, what I would be okay with is you keep these items on your update and then provide some, I mean, I know what Gary's trying to get to, is we need to close these items off. Um, but I think we're missing the point a little bit, that we want things done faster.
No, you just, I, I got the point. You finally said we're missing, we're not getting things done.
Yeah.
And that's the sad part.
We, we actually have four priorities right now that I think we're working on, on, on my desk. That's the park. We're working on the park. I think the revenue model is very, very important. We want to make sure that we're capturing all our, all our revenue. The more revenue we have on our books, that's where we make our budgeting decisions. And I'm working on the organizational structure, and we are working on, what's the other thing that I'm on?
Meters.
Well, I, that, I'm not even, I'm not even heavy in, in the meter project right now. Uh, it just went right, it just went right over my head. The org, the org chart. Oh, I can't, I can't think of it.
That's the problem, because, and it's not your fault, but it's the fact that if you have all of these items, you suddenly lose focus on what the four are, or the three, or the two, or the one. And then they get pushed off to the side. It happens, and in eight years, I can't tell you the number of things that have been pushed off to the side.
And that's one of the reasons why I'm trying to summarize everything on this report. And the things that get pushed down, the ones that are priorities, I just put in that follow-up section, so at least we don't, they don't slip off the table. They might be off in my radar temporarily, but they're not off the table. They stay, they stay on this list. And, and that's how I'm trying to juggle and keep up with everything, and it is, it is a chore.
I'll take the pressure off you on that one. Let's go to number seven. So it says the Gateway Pond and Conservation Area Maintenance bids pre-mid meeting was held and it went well. Okay, what do you mean?
Um, we had several, I, I do not have the summary in front of me, but we had, uh, we had several, uh, bid, bidders show up. Uh, we got through the process. There was a lot of good questions, um, and Mr. Tinkle could probably even follow up on the technical stuff. Uh, right now, we're, we're looking at the pre-fa, the, the pre-qualification process and reviewing the bid documents.
They come in tomorrow at ten o'clock. We have eight, eight bidders, and hopefully they're all qualified. They're similar to, in fact, they were exactly the same ones that, uh, Pelican Reserve did, and, uh, we're going through, we're doing a little bit different. They put in the bid and pre-qualified everybody at the same time. We're doing the pre-qualification and then going back and telling the ones that can submit a bid. So tomorrow at ten o'clock, they have to have, tomorrow, ten o'clock, isn't it?
Yep, it was yesterday, three.
Yesterday at three?
We got them all.
Time flies. Anyway, we have them all. Now we're trying to set up a meeting to go over them all. Tyler and I are having troubles with our time schedules, working it all out, but, uh, the, the best thing we want to do then is to narrow it down. Hopefully all eight are qualified. We come back to you on October sixth, I believe?
Yeah.
And give you our recommendations, then you all say it's a go, then we give them all two weeks, twenty-one days, whatever it is, that then they turn in the bid itself, so.
Okay.
And we gotta kind of watch this, because we could be somewhat in an embarrassing position. Since Pelican Reserve is doing the same thing we're doing, I'd hate to have us throw one out, and they kept them, and, or vice versa. So we're gonna have to do some comparison shopping with PP.
Okay, um, how about fifteen? Anybody else have a question on fifteen? I do. Tyler?
Twenty-five to fifteen.
How you been, sir?
Doing well, sir. How you doing? My name's Tyler Wainwright. I'm with Tetra Tech.
Speaking of item fifteen, Pelican Reserve, Matarita Phase Four.
Yes, sir.
Construction issues with damaged equipment, NPS violations, et cetera, et cetera. Is this where we were the other day?
Uh, this is not. We were actually in Carina, Phase Two, the other day, off of Julia Drive. This is, uh, across the road over in Matarita.
Yeah, so we've got, so what are the items that people are gonna have to, that are on the board are gonna have to look very closely at to make sure that you don't miss a thing here in Matarita, number, Phase Four, before?
I, I don't think I understand the question there. What is the board gonna look at for one now?
Things that are wrong. Are, are you gonna be the guy that's gonna make sure that everything is okay?
As far as correcting construction issues, uh, we over-
Damaged equipment, NPS?
Yes, sir, we go out there and we, we review all of the construction areas, and we follow up and make sure they're replaced or repaired, yes.
Okay. Um, how about that place where we were, though, so that the rest of the board is aware of some of the things that we found?
Uh, so you're talking about Carina, Phase Two. Um, so here's backstory of Carina, Phase Two. WCI is going to take, or has taken, the storm videos in preparation of the turnover of that area to Gateway. Uh, the vendor that they hired, the, the vac truck that was out there, TV and the pipes, had a bunch of oil leaks. So there's some oil standing out on the roadways out there. Um, we're working with the contractor to correct those areas. They're probably gonna have to remove some asphalt and repave it.
Uh, I just have a quick question. Uh, who's, from a staff perspective, whoever sees community development? Is that you?
Me and the engineers. So far, I, the paperwork and all of that comes through my area. We coordinate the in-house paperwork and, uh, with the attorney and the engineer, and then Tyler's-
So Tyler's keeping you in the loop on everything that they find. You're getting full disclosure, just so we can have some internal control or, um, not, not that Tyler needs anybody checking behind him, but just to make sure that everything you find, you're disclosing with April.
And we've been getting a little tighter on our construction approval for installing meters, and we've got a backlog of deficiencies right now. Um, and I think WCI is, is working with us. They're, they're resolving some of these issues.
Yeah, I mean, just in general, I mean, we go out to all of the actual construction sites in Gateway at least once a week, usually more. Um, go through pics and photos of things that are wrong, write up a report, send it out to WCI, the contractors, and to Gateway, so everybody's kept in the loop on what's going on.
What controls do we have? We're seeing excessive damages. Um, is there any pressure we can put on the contractors?
The best thing you can do is, is to refuse to give them meters until they correct the issues.
Correct.
They can't close homes without meters, so. They can't close homes, they can't sell them.
Well, I mean, for once, I would like to see us put our foot down with these contractors and, and hold them accountable before it becomes an issue and we've got to sick Tony on.
And that's what we're doing now.
So we're doing that? Okay, fantastic. Yeah, no, that's good. I'm good.
You'll be the watchdog. There, there are some serious problems with the road over there from this oil that he was describing, or its hydraulic fluid. And Tyler, with his fabulous, expensive boots that he was wearing, kicked on it, and you started seeing street, and the final lift is there, so it can't be covered with another lift, so it's gonna need filling before acceptance. So we'll entrust you, Doug, to keep your eye on it.
I'm entrusting Tyler and Danny.
So that particular area, the contractor knows it, the contractor's well aware of it, the contractor is in process of giving us something in writing, basically saying they're gonna fix everything that they broke.
Yeah.
And until they do that, we withhold meters, you know? So, that's where we're at. I mean, if it's-
Are you, you suggesting we withhold meters, uh-
I mean, I don't know how severe it is, but I mean-
On a, on a, on a road issue?
Well, I, I, I mean, my point is, and I'm not saying we do it here, I was just kind of hypothetically throwing something out.
I don't think it's a bad idea.
Well, I'm just saying, at some point, we've, we've just gotta put our foot down, and it, and if, if our engineering, um, company says that it's severe and it's repetitive, then the only way we can get them on track is to basically, you know, do something that's gonna hinder their progress.
You, we are currently doing that, so there are requests for meters being given to Gateway. Gateway has said no. You have to fix all this before we give you more meters.
You guys have been proactive, so great job on that.
If I can, if I can, if I can add to that. Well, I just want to point out, it was, uh, it was in all this nice correspondence between WCI's attorney and, and Gateway, where they pointed out that we needed to follow our policies and procedures, that they were the ones that were nice enough to point out that, yeah, we should be withholding these meters from them until they correct their issues.
Gary, can you send them a thank you letter to WCI?
Well, I'm, I'm taking care of responding to Neil, so thank you.
Tony can't wait to talk to Neil. Could, uh, can I take him off the hook and put the board on the hook on number nineteen?
Thanks, Tom.
Nice boots.
Number nineteen, those are huge. How long, when I drove here and I looked down at the, the commercial area that was loaded with cars, and once again, we're paying the electricity for the lighting because, quote, "The thing is, is Gateway always has," which frankly was a mistake. And we perpetuate that mistake, making these folk pay for the electricity for a commercial venue that should be paying it themselves.
Are you finished for a moment?
Sure.
Didn't we tell Fairwells about this and gave them sixty days to take over the payment of that, uh, electric bill?
Are we talking about, um, OAK?
Yeah.
Yes, and we spoke to them very early on when this conversation came up, and they are not going to pay for those streetlights.
Yeah, because right here, it says we're still researching. It's right there. So when are we gonna make the conclusion and go, we're not paying this anymore?
Why don't you make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Well-
State the motion, wait, you have a problem?
I, I just wanted to comment that when they're out, residents do walk there. That is a high-traffic area for, for the walkway. And we have had residents calling in, reporting those lights out to us.
Tell them to walk somewhere else.
Yeah, I guess the question is, if they're not our lights, correct?
They aren't. We've researched that before. These aren't our lights. This is a commercial area that decided that they didn't want to pay their dues anymore.
Well, and I think too, I mean, there, there's two pieces that, one is, I mean, turning the lights off is, is turning the lights off. But I think there has to be some additional penalty or something that is gonna require them to either turn those, I mean, I, I don't even know if this is even possible, but even turn the lights over, or they have to have them on. It's a requirement to have those lights working. If not, you know, there has to be something. Just turning them off is not the solution.
Well, one question might be whether or not the development order for that requires the lights to be operable.
There you go.
And that's something, that's a good point. I mean, and they're not ours, and so that might be the approach, is to tell OAK, we're not gonna pay for anymore, and, or research that- already research that with Lee County?
Staff has indicated before there was any construction over there in that area, those lights went up and those are, those boxes have been serviced by the district from the very beginning of time.
But then again, we also had Gateway Greens and Gateway Greens was paying for some of the stuff that we were supposed to be paying for. So that becomes the two wrongs don't make a right type situation.
Right. And we still pay for lighting over there in Gateway Greens?
Hold on just one second. Doug, why do you say turning off the lights is not a solution?
Well, I mean, it's a short-term solution, but if they don't really care whether they're, you know, if they don't care if they're on or off, where, where there's, you know, issues is our residents that may be walking on that. I don't think us saying, if you, we're going, we're going to hand off to you. We're going to stop paying if they get turned off. We're fine with them being off for, forever and ever. I don't think we are comfortable with that. We want them to pay for it and keep them on.
All right. Well, on the other hand, do you think that there's a restaurant over there, et cetera? And again, there were a gazillion cars there. Do you think that the first night that there's no lighting, that they'll come up with their own solution? I think so, but I think that Doug's got a good idea and I think that if they don't come up with a solution, can we then essentially force that solution?
Well, we can research out with April and check on the development order for that.
Okay. Sorry?
They had a POA and they canceled it.
Correct.
Recreate the POA.
Correct. So can we go forth with the motion of, let's say, the end of this month? With the idea that we send them a notification that we're going to cancel? How, how frequently do we pay the bill, April?
Monthly.
Okay. So at the end of this month, that we stop paying for that?
I'd like, go ahead, Mark. No, you go.
Go ahead.
I have a question for Tony. Is this something that we can pass through on their water bill?
No, but, but I think what we could do, again, if we have the legitimate right to, to operate and service and pay for that particular facility, that we could impose a special assessment, a higher amount on those parcels next year to pay for the lighting. Because there's the, we can say that they especially benefit from it, different than any other property.
How about maintenance?
So that's one way we could recover it is even, even from the charges from this year, we can accrue it and say, you're paying for last year's charges.
So wouldn't it be fair to get them something out in writing? Letting them know what we propose to do and giving them a 30-day time limit?
Yeah, and I'm not sure, did you notify them in writing, April, that they need to take care of it 60 days or?
No, I did not. We went over and talked to them, Terry and I.
You went and talked to them?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, right after the discussion came up.
Do you remember who you spoke to?
Uh, I, I have it in a folder in there of who's supposed to-
Tony, couldn't we do the pursuant to, that's all, everybody loves that word, pursuant to the discussion that we had 60 days?
We advised you of this, this, and this, and the time is now up?
But I, I think it, it would be in our best interest to have, that whatever the statute is or the regulation as far as what they got to keep on or not, because what, the position I would love to have when we write that letter is pursuant, or pursuant to blah, 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 we're, you know, stopping payment, whatever. And then have, you know, the legal language that says you are required-
Yeah, what I would suggest is, since we, we advised them verbally or orderly, however you want to characterize it. And there's no paper trail of it, I, I would suggest that a follow-up letter saying, we advised you on such, and such a date of this deadline, that deadline is approaching. This is the formal notification that as of October 31st, say, Halloween, how clever.
Okay.
And that we will no longer be paying for that and reserving all other rights. And that gives the opportunity to also check for any limited development order for that, to see what, any obligations they may have if we can get code enforcement involved.
I mean, best case scenario, they start paying. And that way we don't have to come with a stick.
Exactly.
Okay.
All right. Do we have a separate meter for those lights? If not, we should.
That question I did not ask. I don't know if it's on our grid or not.
Yeah, and what I would suggest is that, that letter go to all the property owners in Fairway Lakes, all, all, and not just OAK, all of them. I've done-
Good idea.
I don't know how many other people know, do not know what's going on, other than OAK.
Yeah, because if not, I think Tony's got a good point. We're going to get the, that person that says, I never heard of this, you know?
Okay. I'll work with April on that.
All right. So, um, October 31st?
Halloween.
All right. So a motion to, A, communicate-
We'll bring flashlights and lanterns and candles.
Okay. A, communicate with each of the-
Property owners.
Property owners by certified mail or not?
And/or residents.
Are, are they residential? I don't think they are. I think it's on commercial.
It could be a commercial property. I still have people, um, working there.
Okay. Do we need to do certified mail? Tony?
I'd say no.
No? Okay. So then why don't we provide a notification as to be done immediately, immediately undefined. And that we will stop the payment for those lights on October 31st or after October 31st.
Is that your motion?
That's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
What was I saying? Any further conversation?
Do we need to include in that motion, um, any work that Tony and April are going to do in order to research? Does that need to be attached to it?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll attach to, amendment to the motion is to also approve Tony and April to continue or to start to look at what the statutes or regulations-
Other remedies, other remedies might be.
And could you notify us by next meeting? Let's finalize this thing next meeting, okay?
Yeah.
You're the maker of the motion. You agreed to all of those.
I am, for sure. I think that was good. Very good.
Any, anything further on this item? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Five zero, Mr. Manager, please.
And, and just a comment, I won't be here at the October 6th meeting and all next week. I will be working on the organizational structure. So I don't know how, how, how much, how much momentum we'll have before the October 20, 20th.
All right. Can't you designate somebody else as the responsible person, Stephen?
Yeah, I mean, this is what our management company could base it.
Chris, are you 6'5" or, are you 6'5" or 6'6", Chris? Bye-bye.
Okay. And last but not least, item number 20, the last sentence, French drain on Lake 128, washout. Could not be located, will need to be found so staff can determine if it is undermining the soil and causing a washout. So what are we going to do?
Uh, we haven't made any progress on this right now, um, because that's why it's on the follow-up list. Because we found out, we did go over to the resident and inspected the irrigation system. There was no problems. And on that visit, we found out that there's a French drain somewhere in the yard, um, which they do not know the location of. So staff, we're going to have to come up with something. I'm not sure exactly how we approach that, that it's something in the neighbor's yard on their property that could very well be creating this washout in our easement. Not sure exactly how to approach that.
Okay. Well, that's, was part of the point. You, you carried it very well. What are we going to do about things like this in the future?
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, are they, can, do you think the French drain is connected to the district's drainage system? Without authorization from the district?
No, the way that I understand it is there's a French drain, uh-
What's a French drain, just so I know?
I would imagine this issue is like a little pit of gravel or something where the, where the downspouts from the two neighbors hook into a line that's washing back very, very close to where this washout begins. But we don't know where it, we don't know where it is. It's completely underground. I think one of the houses may still be hooked up to it and one of them is not. I think that's what they said.
What's a French drain, Tyler? Let's get the official-
There, there's a, there's a four-inch ADS pipe coming off the roof gutters that's buried in the ground and they don't know where it's at.
Okay. So it discharges to something?
It discharges to somewhere underground.
Is it one of those that has a pop-up and it just, over time it grows over and then it just, or is it like just a?
I think what happened was there used to be a pop-up, a bubbler box in the yard somewhere. Somewhere along the line, it got buried or cut or removed or something, and neither one of the residents knows where it's at.
All right. So my point being additionally, if we go and spend the monies to get the lake fixed, yet we leave something there, aren't we kind of shooting our own self in the foot? Walking away from that? And shouldn't there be a requirement?
I mean, I think the issue is it's, it's up on private property that I don't think Gateway has the ability to access right now, so. I mean, we can't just go digging up our yard looking for something.
Unless it's tied into our lake. I mean, I guess the question is, how does it cause the Lake 128 washout?
It, basically all of the roof drain goes down through this gutter, down into this pipe somewhere underground. So we think it's piped somewhere back along the lake slope.
So if it is, then the district could cap it, if you find it.
If you can find it.
Or would we run it with the pipe down into the lake?
Good.
But shouldn't we have some procedure or policy tied into the permit criteria manual that requires something like that? Or in X number of years, you'll be back repairing that lake again?
You already need to repair it again right now.
We already need to repair?
Yes, sir.
Well?
And, and do you think it's a result of that issue or?
It's hard to say.
Is it because the, the water is coming through that French drain or whatever? And that water flow is causing that bank erosion from the, or is it just, you know, that, that pipe is concentrating all that water coming through and it's just seeping through and I, I don't really, I can't visualize what the issue is.
The, the contractor went out there, regraded slope and put down some geotextile matting to, to help secure it. Problem is, all of the dirt on the backside of that matting washed in underneath it. So there's, there's nothing really that causes that other than something leaking of trinkler pipe or a drain that we don't know about. Something that washes behind it. So we just don't really know what washed out.
By any wild chance, is it in our easement?
Uh, it could be within your easement. I mean, you have a 20-foot wide lake maintenance easement on that lake. I mean, we could just go start digging if that's what-
There you go. So that's our easement, therefore it becomes our-
Be careful. He did not say that. He said it could be.
Okay. But we have the right to inspect within?
Inspect within, correct.
Correct?
Yep, absolutely.
So therefore, if we project where that pipe strikes the ground, we go forward to our easement and have somebody just dig right there?
Along the lake bank?
Or prior, just prior to, as soon as our easement starts?
And then we backfill it, right?
Correct.
And hopefully run into-
Throw a couple of pieces of sod down and-
What's your recommendation?
Um, I mean, if we could get permission from the homeowner to go and just chase it down from the homeowner's side, it'd be a lot easier. I mean, just put water down the gutter and dye it or do something to find it. But we would need permission from the homeowners.
All right. So are we going to do something now? Are we going to be proactive?
I would think that they would want this repaired so it'd be easy to get their permission to try and help us down.
Yes. Um, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's the easiest way to find it. It's just a matter, I think, next of, who's going to pay for it? Contractor go do that.
Board all in favor of helping, uh, Tyler and the contractor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do it.
There it is. And in the future, we'll do the same.
Tony, do you have a-
We'll see how this works out.
Okay.
It's good, yeah.
No, no, I'm comfortable.
Mr. Newbauer, do you have other?
I'm done.
You're done?
I'm ready for the next item.
Wait a minute. That's the la, that's the last item.
No, well, the next item is about L. I don't want to talk about L.
Oh, that item, okay. April, there's an item here for one time by out of sick leave for one of our employees that both you and our attorney gave us information on. Would you, let's, let's let Mr. Newbauer ask his question, please.
Well, I think we ought to let April summarize and give us her opinion and then I may not have a question.
No, all right.
Okay.
Please summarize and give your-
Oh, shortly after I arrived, it was brought to my attention because it's part of the audit process. Uh, so I believe it was Sonia that brought it to my attention and Cal, that we have this issue. Uh, we have a policy where we state that we can't exceed these accrued balance caps. Um, so I, I did a little bit of research to find out why we have employees so far above the cap. And turned out, we've, they've pretty much, there's always been someone that has been in excess of the cap. And we've been struggling, I guess, from management company to management company, to get this issue resolved. So we researched it, we worked on it. I did, I drilled down a little bit to find out, you know, well, how did this happen? And, you know, again, we are a very small staff, so it's very difficult for staff to take a significant amount of time off. Um, and we have some very dedicated staff members that don't really like to take time off. And so they didn't. And then there's possibilities where they might have been denied time off. There's lots of possibilities that could have led up to it. But the end result was we have a policy that states we can't be over these caps. So, um, we, we devised a plan and part of the plan was that we would schedule some time off. So, eh, one of the employees, we were able to resolve the issue with just time off. You have to take some vacation time. And, and we scheduled that out, so that's a done issue. And then, um, Ms. L actually had two banks that were over the, the cap. And so hers was a little bit more difficult to just resolve with time off because she'd basically be off for the remainder of the year, you know, and we can't do without her. She's a crucial component of the organization. So we did it, um, we were, we did it by mixing it up and she's got, um, a significant amount of time scheduled. And that was in the process when I got here. Uh, it just wasn't enough time scheduled. So we scheduled her, um, but we believe that any additional time off and these amounts, uh, like in Tony's memo, is actually net of additional time off. She still, she has time scheduled off through 9:30. And this is the balance of still what's going to be remaining at 9:30, the 186 hours. And so we, many organizations have a buyback policy as part of their, their, um, overall employee retention benefit program. And so that was the one way and pretty much the, um, most optimal way that we could get this resolved as of 9:30 16, put this behind us. We are all aware of this cap now. We've established procedures with ST on how we're going to evaluate it. It's going to be evaluated at fiscal year end. Um, and we're going to manage the caps. So she's the only one that, that is remaining with the issue. And this is the residual amount of buying back these time, this time. So as of 10/1, we will be in compliance with the policy and we will comply with the policy in the future.
Mr. Attorney, do you have anything that you want to add?
I just have one question, April. Um, and part of this new policy, will it dictate how much time that you're allowed to carry over year over year?
It, the policy is already set. We just haven't been, we haven't been very diligent about managing it.
Um, I don't think employees should be carrying over 100% of their vacation time. I think they should be using a portion of that during the year.
No, the vacation time, you can only carry over a year's worth of accrual.
No. Uh, what I'm saying is, if I get 40 hours of vacation time annually, I need to take a percentage. Our policy should state that you're required to take a percentage of that, whether it's 30% or 50%.
And, and I understand, but I, I, I'm going to request some latitude when it comes to revising policies. Uh, this is an identified issue. This is, this, this is the immediate solution.
And I'm okay with that.
Revising these policies is on the radar, but we have not had time to, to evaluate these policies and start this revision process. So definitely during that process, you know, I think that information would be better, better applied during a policy revision. Right now, I'm not, I'm not suggesting any policy revisions.
We're just getting back on track to where we should have gone. So if you could just make a note, when it is time for policy review, that is something that we should look at.
And along those lines, we've had discussions on other aspects of the accrued vacation, personal leave, sick time, uh, other ways to handle it to, to, uh, have some other aspects, more flexibility as far as donation too. We've had conversations, which will come back as a package.
I mean, it's time for that policy to be reviewed.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, a couple of questions. Stephen, is there any way you can put in the ST software that in the payroll situation that you start to flag as somebody accrues and excessive from norm amounts so that operations would know that type of thing or was alerted to that type of thing?
Uh, yes. The short answer is yes. And basically, some, and this is taking quite a bit of time of April and staff auditing basically every one of these, um, accounts. But we have and we will be providing April a, one day after payroll, a listing of everybody.
Okay.
You know, so that she will have the good information to be evaluate that.
Okay.
Now, it's my understanding though, that staff on their paycheck stubs also has that information on it as well.
Yeah, but it has to be something that's done for more of the managerial.
Sure, so, but I'm just saying, two levels you'll have.
Okay.
The employees will have that information, April will have that information, you know, that way there's, you know, more than, you know, one way that people are looking at things.
A lot of places, when people accrue vacation time, they can actually stack it at the end as far as an early retirement situation.
We don't have anything like that.
Anybody have any negative thoughts about something like that?
When we redid the employee manual?
Yeah.
Three years ago?
Yeah.
Yes, it was. Many of those type of items were discussed, and Pam was instrumental in helping us get that manual and those rigs put together. And the rigs seem to be fine for this size of a stamp, but in this one case, an employee ran over, and the only legitimate way to fix this on a one-time basis is to, uh, take care of it this way.
I don't think it's unreasonable to, to revisit that at whatever time the policy is, is reviewed. I mean, we don't have a policy for that, but.
Pam, you wanna insert anything before I ask my next question?
I, I think, I don't think that this is an issue of, we don't have a policy in place. But my understanding is that the employees and with the changeover of the operation manager, it just wasn't known or enforced.
Managed, correct.
So, it wasn't managed. So I think what we're trying to do right now is just to get past this situation with, uh, L and move forward with.
And we'll send out reminders, and we're also gonna have acknowledgement.
That's why the acknowledgement is at the beginning of each fiscal year, the acknowledgement is, I'm gonna use it or lose it. I mean, which, that's another way to track it.
Of the rest of the staff, there's no one that's approaching anything like this?
No, that's all been taken care of.
Okay, then my other question is, is on page 41. New math. If you take a look at page 41 in the first paragraph, uh, the asserted total amount of hours reported to us was 463.975 hours. We're really cutting it down to the seconds here, but on the same date, August 6th, it's 223.975 hours. And then as of September 30th, it was 423.975 hours.
Part of it, the total amount of hours was 463.975. The excess, because you back off to 240, gets you to 223.975.
Okay.
And then the hours were further reduced by L taking some time off.
Okay.
And that's, and that's when we ties back into the 186.
So she took 40 hours off, essentially.
Correct, and that's what ties back into 186 net. That's in April's memo. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, just didn't.
Well, I just know that's good to get for the record. I think it's a good point.
I have a motion to approve this recommendation of this one time.
Yep, I'll make it.
Motion to approve.
I'll second Pam.
I just have one question, and that is, is, is L Harris okay with this?
Yes.
Is she happy with this resolution?
Yes.
That's a great question.
That's my question.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, five zero, Mr. Manager. Thank you, uh, April. Um, let's talk about pool chair purchase.
Pool chairs. Um, I bring this to you, um, hopefully it will be received well. Um, I have a feeling that we replaced the chairs too short time ago, because it was just three years. Um, but we're having a, um, the style of chair that we purchased three years ago just does not work for our application. At the commercial level, um, with the pool chemicals constantly getting on them, they're constant, they're, they're left out in the sun. I even had a sling chair on my home lanai under a screen, and it didn't, didn't hold up. So, we would like, we're asking to go back to the strapped chair. Um, it's gonna have, the pictures do not show it, but it would have the green band on the top and the green band on the bottom, just like they used to be. Because the strap chairs, uh, staff said the last ones lasted like seven years. Um, and they're easier to replace becau, or, uh, repair, because usually it's just one or two straps that end up getting worn. And you can literally just have, have the technician re, restrap that one or two, uh, straps on the chair. Uh, right now, we, uh, they're rapidly declining. Uh, we will have some viable chairs, I think, that we can offload and sell. And so, one of the things that we are researching, uh, a popular outlet for governments is govdeals.com. And I think that's, that should be an outlet that we, um, utilize here for these miscellaneous, um, items that we could actually recapture a little bit of revenue on if we had the right platform.
How many are we talking about? Do you know, that are resellable?
Um, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm not sure exactly how many are resellable, because they're, they're declining. Basically, we have, I, we're saying that there's 29 currently that's needing repair. Um, and I'm not sure, what was the total number of, of chairs? I'm thinking, I'm thinking around 20 or 25 we should have as viable chairs. Yeah, and it was suggested when we reached out to GovDeals, um, you know, to put them in like small lots that, uh, might be more accommodating for a household, you know.
We might even be able to reach out to some of the HOAs that have pools, if they're in good enough condition, um, for those HOAs with pools to purchase them. The smaller HOAs probably.
Tony, I'm leaning on the alternative method in the statute, if, if that's appropriate.
What do you mean?
What's that?
With regards to devaluation?
Yeah, whatever is the most viable economical means of, of offloading them.
Yeah.
I believe, I believe I attached the stat, the, that part of the statute to the, to the packet, 27406. I figured you might be.
I know, we talked about that in the past.
And the tables and umbrellas are fine?
Tables and umbrellas are fine. That's why we wanna go back to this manufacturer, so we can match up to the new tables that we, that we got.
And is this, will this be coming out of this year's budget or next year's budget?
Can we do a prepaid? Can we use 2017? I know you don't like it.
Well, no, it's not that, it's just that prepaid is cash-wise. Depends when you get the, the chairs in.
I, I, I think they're, I think they're holding a discount for us, and I'm hoping that, um, I was gonna try to get this out to him 10-1, so we can use 10, 2017 budget. He, he's extending a discount, basically, I think, just to make sure that we move forward with this. And I can't imagine what a few days difference would make, but I would like to use the 2017 budget.
Yeah, in your estimation, the value is less than $5,000 for the shares.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yep, that's good.
Okay.
Motion for approval, please? Second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further conversation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, five zero, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, April. Um, ladies and gentlemen of the board, uh, the manager handed to me a request, uh, from one of our residents to address the board at this time. We are well past the time, uh, set aside for residents to address the board. It's requesting forgiveness for shut-off of water. May I ask this resident to come forward and address the board? Ms. Lordis Bennett, please come forward and to the podium, and for the record, state your name and address.
My name is Lordis Bennett, and I'm a resident owner at Bristol Park. Unfortunately, I didn't pay my water on time. I lost my job two and a half months ago. So the day that I was planning to pay it, it had already been turned off. This, this is my first, uh, shut-off since I've lived in Bristol Park for 15 years. So I'm asking forgiveness.
Say again, I'm sorry.
So I'm asking for forgiveness. This is my first shut-off in 15 years. Uh, $50. That's the penalty for shutting it off.
April, we have a, we have a policy on these, uh, items, I believe. Uh, has it been discussed with Ms. Bennett?
We've been working with staff, and we've been digging through policies, and I did review this particular, uh, situation. And our policy even provides us guidelines as far as what to consider for forgiveness, and this did not fall within those guidelines. Um, however, we do have, um, a, a procedure. Uh, it's a little bit more formal than this. I believe the actual policy indicates that we're supposed to receive something in writing. I believe it, uh, escalates to the finance director. And then ultimately, if we can't resolve it internally, then it would be escalated to the board. But by all means, if the board so chooses to circum, you know, eliminate that, waive that, uh, that formality of how it gets to you, that is, that is something at your leisure.
I think the board's prerogative, if the board wishes to, on an ad hoc basis, to waive the formal procedures and evaluate, and make a determination as to waiving the shut-off.
Members, how long have you lived here?
15 years.
Have you ever been late in the past?
I have.
How many times?
Maybe several times. I can't, I would have to look.
Maybe several times?
One, two, three times, I'm thinking, and I'm, when I say late, probably a couple of weeks late or less.
I would, what I would say is, not just in your situation, but just, uh, I think we need to follow the policy. So what I would say is, I mean, I appreciate you coming here, but again, this is a public environment. I would direct you to just ha, follow April's lead and submit, um, uh, in writing your request. Uh, and let us go through that procedure, as opposed to us having to ask you questions and, and make that decision here in the board meeting. Um, and I think, I think everyone is, uh, is understanding of the situation. Uh, I just think it'd be a better process for you to submit in writing and let us go that route.
Sure, they suggested that I come here, that, 'cause I asked about it, and that's why I was, I came here, but I can do that.
Okay, all right.
Everybody, you okay with that? Okay, fine. Please, please, uh, proceed in that manner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to see us.
Sure.
Okay, we're, we're into staff reports. Mr. Attorney?
Uh, I will be responding to Ms. Montgomery's letter that was sent to everyone last week. And I also understand that there's other correspondence that Ms. Montgomery's had with April that she did not include me on. April will be so kind as to forward that to me, and I will be responding to that also. Oh, this, I already have this one from last week.
You got that one?
That one I have. The other one I don't have, which is dated September 17th.
Ooh, do we have it?
Yes.
Are we sure?
I don't believe the board has the other one.
Do we have September 17th?
No.
Therefore.
I apologize, I haven't got to my pile yet.
Yeah, we were having a conversation this morning, so April and I, we've been talking about that, so. So, I find it interesting that Ms. Montgomery would do that, but, uh, without copying me and copying everybody else.
Do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Uh, Mr. Engineer?
Don't feel bad, I didn't get one either.
Hello again, everybody. I'm still Tyler Wainwright, I'm still with Central Tech. Uh, so, one item from us tonight is a memorandum about some street lighting over on Griffin Drive. So if you remember, oh, I think maybe a year ago now, uh, we received some bids for installing lighting on Griffin Drive. Uh, this was part of the same bid where we replaced the street lighting up on Gateway Boulevard for the, uh, the roadway improvements. Um, the bid for the lights on Griffin Drive, the board chose not to move forward with. So, we went and looked at a couple of other options, um, and one option being to approach FPNL, and seeing FPNL wanted to put in lights. So, the quick version of the summary is, FPNL will install lights. Uh, they have various rates and various ways they bill for that. Um, they have a very basic option, which is a, just a standard pole, standard fixture, where the cost to the district is very minimal. Basically, all they would charge. And that scenario is for any directional boards they have to do under the roadway. And we're still on the hook for permitting. But other than that, uh, it would be essentially free to district upfront. However, you would pay a monthly rate for those poles to be owned and maintained in perpetuity by FPNL. Uh, the rate is approximately $20 a month per pole. Uh, then they have other options from there about going with decorative fixtures, decorative poles, and there's various costs associated with all those different options. So, I think in the memo, we gave you a map of where we're proposing to put all the lights up. Uh, the little yellow pins on there are the existing light poles on the west side of Griffin Drive. The little red pins are the proposed light poles. So there's about 20 new ones we're looking at putting in. This is where the, uh, the new pathway was constructed on Griffin, so it'd basically be to illuminate that pathway.
So the existing lights that are there, uh, I'm assuming you would be proposing to match those on the other side of the road. Which ones are those?
Uh, the ones on the west side, so in front of Silver Lakes right now, they are octagonal concrete poles. They're 35 foot tall, and they have the shoebox fixture on top. It literally looks like a shoebox. So, one of the options presented in this memo is, is to match that. That's not the standard free upfront pole. That one would have an upfront cost from FPNL, 'cause they consider that a premium light. Um, the upfront cost to do all of the lights with that option is about 60 grand upfront.
What, what, uh, what's in over by Stony Brook, the new ones that they put in?
Um, are they the black ones that have like a black cone looking thing on there?
Yeah.
Um, I think in this attachment here, there's, there's a couple of brochures from FPNL. One is called Street Lighting Program. And then one is called the Premium Lighting Program. The ones under the street lighting, uh, there's like four options there. Those are all, um, free upfront. There's no initial capital cost to FPNL. So, uh, there's, that one that says Cobra Head right there, that's basically what you see, like when US 41, um, driving up and down. That's pretty much what they install on all the major roadways in Lee County, Collier County. Uh, I think the ones they put in in Stony Brook are the one called the Traditional right there. So it'll be the top right one.
Those are the ones, yeah, inside the community, but down the street on the median on Gateway.
They don't look like it.
Those are, uh, those are shoebox styles.
Is that the dark bronze fiberglass on the next page?
As far as the pole goes, um.
The pole's not the same, but the tu, the.
This is, this is what we've.
It's, it's sort of similar to that. Those poles were actually, they weren't FPNL provided. Gateway just bought those from the contractor. Um, they're black and they're fiberglass. They're not, they don't really match anything here in FPNL's brochure, I guess.
Uh, Tyler, does, um, FPNL sell any solar-powered streetlights?
Uh, no, sir, that would be counterproductive to their, uh, business. They, uh, no, sir, they, basically what they're doing here is, by giving you these lights, uh, free upfront and asking you to pay $20 a month, you're essentially financing the, the poles. Um, I mean, the good part about doing FPNL owned and maintained poles is, they provide the maintenance forever, as long as you keep paying for them. Um, you know, there, there's definitely a cost to replace fixtures, replace bulbs, replace poles, when people run them over, things like that, that, uh, that Gateway, um, currently pays throughout the majority of your community. I think actually Stony Brook are FPNL owned and maintained poles, I'm pretty sure. Um, but I think almost every other community in Gateway is, you're just buying power from FPNL, but you own and maintain the poles.
We do like those, the lights at Stony Brook, the new ones they put out, the LED, just illuminates so much better than the old ones. So we just need to decide on whether we want which, which option we.
Uh, yes, sir, and we, we did receive some pricing from FPNL. Um, he did tell me, Michael Karas is the rep for this area for FPNL. And we were reaching out to him to get the prices and options and things like that. And, uh, we present, I think, three options in our memo. The one for the shoebox fixtures that would as closely match the rest that we have in the community as we can, uh, they actually don't offer those in, um, sodium lights, which is like the yellowish looking light you have now. They actually only offer those in LED. So, it's, it's a good thing for, you know, obviously, energy costs and all that. Um, but it is gonna be a different color as you drive down the road, so I just wanna point that out to everybody that it'll. that out to everybody that it'll match, but when you're driving at night, they are going to be different light colors, so you're gonna see that.
You're gonna have yellow on one side and bright white on the other.
If you do go with one of the more standard options there, that are the free upfront, no capital, those would be the high-pressure sodium lights that are gonna match the rest of your community.
Do you have a recommendation for us?
Um, see personally, I like the new LED lights, they just illuminate so much better. But...
What would be the cost for the LED lights?
Uh, sixty thousand upfront.
Sixty?
Yes, ma'am, for twenty light poles that are thirty-five foot poles with a single shoebox fixture, two hundred watt LED would be sixty grand total upfront capital.
That's pretty expensive.
Now, I mean, we, we have a lot of options from here. I mean, we could reduce the number of lights and poles we install. We could go with a shorter pole. We could go with a less light-intensive pole. I mean, there's a lot of options we could pursue if you wanted to get that capital cost lowered. That's just sort of the first thing that we priced out with them. So basically, we're just looking to see, you know, the board has interest in doing this, and if so, which options, I guess, would you like us to pursue further?
What do you think it would look like to, to go with the traditional or contemporary style that would be free?
Um, the, so, the two options there, contemporary, you can put on the thirty-five foot concrete poles. So height-wise, it would match the other ones you have. The traditional, I think those only come in the twenty-foot poles, so they would be lower, they would illuminate a little bit less.
And that's what's in Stony Brook for, that you see in the community. Those are FPL poles, so that would match, but they would be too low.
So, I, I think I said earlier, but I just want to emphasize also, FPNL will go out there and construct these, you know, assuming you enter an agreement to pay for them, but Gateway will be on the hook for any permitting involved with the county, so there's still that other portion there.
So the problem is, is we just don't have a standard. I mean, if we had a standard, it'd make it easy. You know, when they put in new lights in Stony Brook, we'd have a standard, it would match everything else. Or if we're going to LED, if that's what we're doing, we would have a plan for that over the next ten years to replace out. We just, it's hard to make this decision because, you know, we can either go on the cheap and just put it up there, or if there's, we want something that maybe looks a little nicer, I just have a hard time being able to make that decision today.
Or we can, we can ask the engineer to reduce the number of new prospective lights from twenty-three down to eighteen or something.
I mean, I'm sure there's a reason why you guys picked that number, right?
Well, the first, first, eight of the, I believe it's eight of the lights are on the west side of the road in the new sidewalk area that WCI put in. Now, we approached WCI previously and asked them, you know, to participate. There's no requirement for them to do that, so I'm not advocating that you take those out because I think if you have sidewalks in, you, you have a liability if somebody's walking there at night. So, you could do that. I'm not advocating for that, but, you know, there, I mean, there are options. We could still look at, you know, the solar, but the problem with changing the spacing is you're gonna have to demonstrate to the county, and we are gonna have to submit to the county for a permit, so you're gonna have to demonstrate luminescence.
Yeah. Anyone else have any?
I mean, basically, the reason we came up with the, that number of poles was that matches the existing spacing you've got in front of Silver Lakes.
I mean, I guess, what I would ask from the other board members is, is there, is there a cost concern for any of you? Is there a design concern? And is there any, you know, continuity concern? I mean, I have a little bit in all three, so.
Yeah.
So it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to even, you know, make a recommendation because, you know, have something nice is, is, it is a lot of money, but, you know, you know, lighting is lighting and it's a very visible thing in our community.
And I think the biggest thing is the safety concern.
And you want it to look good, too, but I don't want to have to pay an arm and a leg for it, but...
I mean, there's the option of going with one of their standard poles, which, I mean, you know, there, there is a aesthetic issue about it not matching the other ones. I mean, I don't know really personally, driving down the road, if you're gonna pay a lot of attention to the fixture on the end of a light pole. I mean, at night, when you're really looking at them, the standard options would all look exactly identical to the, the ones that are on the west side of the road.
Can we change that?
Uh, yeah, so other option, not option, but I guess item we could consider is the poles on the west side of the road that are in front of Silver Lakes right now, we can remove those and have FPNL install poles in that area. They won't buy them or overtake them or take them from us, but we could remove those and have FPNL put up poles that would, so the entire street would match perfectly.
And we're talking about, these are streetlights.
Streetlights, yes, sir.
Not the tall streetlights, I don't even know what you call them.
They're thirty-five foot tall concrete poles.
Not sidewalk lights, streetlights.
Correct.
Okay.
So...
Why would you, why would you consider removing those?
Well, the only reason why is i- if you remove the other ones, they're not gonna conflict with the new ones you put in. Everything would match and you could get all of them owned and maintained by FPNL and you would just be paying them a flat monthly rate, so if that's something the board would like to do, that's definitely an option.
What'd we do with the light poles that we took out on Gateway Boulevard?
You've got, you've got ten concrete poles right now that are sitting out back behind the dog park. If you go with the option of having FPNL perform the maintenance on those poles, they won't touch them. They, they want to use their own for liability purposes and things like that. If you were gonna go with the option of you buy lights and poles and just buy energy from FPNL, we could absolutely reuse those.
Can, can you look at that option? That, I mean, that's not here, but I would like to know what the cost difference would be if we just purchased them from someone else had them installed.
And then we maintain them, right?
We, we actually did that. When we bid out the lights last time on Griffin Drive, that's exactly what we bid. We said reuse these ten poles, put up lights provided by the contractor and we'll just buy energy from FPNL. I can't remember the exact cost, maybe Danny does? It was like over a hundred grand to do the whole thing. And a lot of that expense was, if you're putting up your own poles, you've gotta run your own circuits, you've gotta run your own wire, everything else to supply power to those. FPNL is basically letting you finance that by just paying a monthly.
Sounded like a good idea at the time.
Yes, sir. Um, I mean, there, there's, there is the option of, you can take down the poles you have or leave them alone and just put up the standards and there's, there's very little to no upfront capital and you can have your whole street lit up.
Can we, can we table this until our next meeting? So we've got time to review and what I'd like to do is, really, I'd just like to look at designs a little bit and, and if someone has a, maybe a recommendation or...
Is it okay with everybody if we just...
I'm, I'm gonna stand still, I can't, I wouldn't even be able to make a, a recommendation.
Well, Tyler, you can have some designs sent to the rest of the board members, I guess.
They're in the book, right?
They're in the book.
Yes, ma'am, so, I mean, basically, all of the FPNL options are these two documents that are in here. That's all, that's everything they've got, that they have to offer. Obviously, you can, you know, buy anything commercially available if you want to buy your own, but that's FPNL's options, so if you've got any questions for us, I mean, we'd be, you know, happy to answer.
And what do we have to, what do we use today? We use concrete and shoebox?
Uh, the majority of the poles in Gateway are concrete. They're octagonal and you've got a shoebox fixture on the end that's high-pressure sodium.
Is there any, is there anything negative or about what we were using today?
No, sir, other than, I mean, they're HPS, they're not LED, but that's about it.
And does LED, what, what benefits does it give us?
Just lower energy cost.
Is it enough to offset spending more upfront over a fifteen-year period?
Um, possibly. I would have to look at the numbers, obviously, but, I mean, there's a good chance, yes.
I don't think it would be that much, but I don't know. It would be a lot?
We're in the process of doing it and getting your agreement.
Yeah, okay.
I would think between the, the rental, because if we get the, we would still, it would still be FPL's lights, right? So they would take care of the maintenance.
With the LED option?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So between the maintenance and the cost, the en, the energy, it would offset the cost.
That's, okay.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna put this, we're gonna put this off until October 6th.
Sounds good.
Now, do you have anything else for us, Mr. Engineer?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you so much. District manager, Chief?
I do not have anything else.
Utilities operations manager report, and you got your helmet on.
Yes, sir.
Christopher?
Chris Schumaker. And I'll go over just a few things that I think are important and just save the meter installation to last, in case you want to add, add any questions, but we do have a few projects coming up in Gateway and one of the more important ones is the installation of the TECO gas line. And that gas line will be serving the Gateway Commons Pool and the Fort Myers Brewery. Eleven thousand five hundred feet a line, about two thousand and that is six inch line, the rest of it's two inch line. And this will be challenging for us because that gas line will be crossing utility facilities in seventy-five different areas, whether it be force main, sanitary sewer, drainage pipe, reclaimed water main, that type of thing. There's gonna be a lot of crossings and a lot of construction adjacent to our facilities. And the steps that we plan to take to minimize any damage to our facilities or any outages is we will be using EarthTech, EarthView, excuse me, ground penetrating radar to locate some of those facilities, especially in the intersections and high-density areas. We're also planning on buying some sticks of pipe and repair clamps prior to getting started, so if we do have an incident out in the field, we can respond quickly and have those parts there. And when I say that, I shouldn't say it lightly because even a set of clamps for a six, eight, ten, twelve, and sixteen inch line, you're pushing about sixteen hundred dollars and about the same for the pipe. And we also plan on bringing AIM Engineering in to do some limited construction supervision. And one, they also do the GPR. They also have a vacuum truck where they'll pothole lines so we can find exact locations to those and also to have an owner's representative on site, couple hours a day, three to four days a week. And AIM mostly because of their background in working with gas lines in construction and utility operations. And we're not trying to take any of the burden off the contractor, the plan state and the work order state that they will excavate and identify and protect the utilities. We're just going to add some insurance on that and be double-checking some of those measurements. And at the same time, updating some of our mapping because we may have an NASBIL that says the line's three feet off edge of pavement, but when we go there and put the GPR on it and dig it up, maybe it's four feet and maybe it's four feet down, not five feet down, so we're gonna try to enhance our location information in these areas. And the, the last part of this will be too, on October 6th, TECO and the other gas companies are sponsoring a seminar down on Alaco Road at the Holiday Inn. And in the morning, it's for utility personnel and excavators talking about working with gas lines and having gas lines adjacent to their facilities and excavation rules. And that'll be in the morning and two of our staffers will be attending that. It's free of charge. And in the afternoon, they run a similar seminar, but it's more for managers, public officials, in case of an emergency or how to address any problems you might have with the gas line. So, and we expect that project to start doing locates the first week in October. The contractor said they'll probably be boring and the entire project is bored, except for when they come up, but they'll probably be digging four to five weeks and seven to eight total project, including any replacement of any sod or any damage we might have. So. Any questions on the gas line?
No.
And if anybody'd like to see a set of the plans or any other information, I'd be glad to share it with them. Last meeting, I went over the irrigation control upgrade that we've done recently with our pumps and putting some SCADA technology to work and the last part we're working on now is just getting our, some different SIM cards and a couple of our cell phones, so any alarms or any of those wells that go out, the alert will be sent directly to our cell phones. And of course, with any technology, there's a price to that. It may be more convenient to have that and we can respond faster, but you have that hundred dollar a month software support cost put into the technology. And also, in the next week, we'll be adding those telemetry units to four of our wastewater pump stations, the main pump stations, and having that same capability. Instead of a red light or a sound alarm, we'll get an alarm to the station, the computer here, and also to the cell phones. And as we go on and work on these lift stations, we'll continue to add those modules to each station.
Chris, if, when we go to the telemetry setup, do, will we still maintain the, the lights and the horns?
Yes, they'll, they'll stay on. And that, that's basically a battery and a circuit in there and, yeah, we'll use that as a backup. I have on here two pond 104 revisited, that's one of the ponds that we need to go in and do some additional work with. And I have met two times with the property owners, meeting with them again tomorrow or Monday. And basically, what I did was just put boots in the ground, walked around the site with them and said, here's what the project entails, here's a column for your expectations, here's a column for my realities that I have to work with them, and the fourth column is gonna be what we're gonna agree or disagree on. And we had a meeting and tried, tried our best to work with them and they had a huge oak tree that's been in the ground for fifteen years. They didn't plant it and they really wanted to keep that oak tree. And I told them, they said, well, can't you work around it? And I said, yes, we can work around it if we get a little bit more of a construction easement, but your oak tree's right on top of that storm line and it is choking that storm line. So if we leave the tree in now, it'll only be a few more years, we'll be coming in here and digging up your whole yard in the front to replace that pipe, not to mention the cost. So we went through and I showed them the vegetation they had that was gonna come out and some that they could leave that wouldn't impact us and basically told them that the CDD was not gonna be responsible for any replanting, that we were gonna claim the easement, that we were gonna remove the plants that were in the way of our access and that we would restore the turf, any damage, any rut marks, that type of thing, but as far as replanting their landscape, we would not be responsible for that.
And?
Well, they, they, they didn't chase me out of there, they'd like to keep the oak and I said, you know, if you have any significant issues, you're welcome to come to the board, but I, I, I think they're, I think they're resigned to it and really what we're trying to use this for is an access model for all the additional pond work. And they, they may not like what I said, but I said it real nice and I think meeting out there and listening to their concerns and some of the things you can work on and that residents don't like, contractors throwing trash in the ground, you have an easement, well, they're walking around the other side of my house, why are they over there? The easement's here. Staging areas, you know, just some of those construction issues that you really need to iron out and also have those expectations conveyed to the contractor so he follows those and following up with the contractor. And some of those things are as little as, why did ten guys have to park their cars in front of my house on both sides of the street? So, some of those things.
Good, good work on that, Chris. I mean, that's, it's a great way to go about solving these, these issues.
And I think that we identified eight issues and I think six out of eight, we smoothed them over and the other two, the replacement of the vegetation, they don't like it, but hopefully they'll go along with it.
Mr. Chairman, just a question, I guess. Chris, did you advise them in writing also, or is it just you, you had a conversation with them, so they can understand the parameters of the project and what's going to happen and what's not going to happen?
Correct, and, and we are going to memorialize that and we're all gonna sign it and we're going to attach it to a letter I send to them.
Okay, if you could run that by me before you...
Yes, sir, I will, that'll go to you first.
And I think it's better coming from you.
Right. And I just want...
I do, too.
It's definitely more likeable, Johnny, than you are.
A little, a little softer approach, yes. I can write soft letters, but it better come from Chris.
And we're also... And we're also underway with our irrigation well evaluation. That's basically laying, and they're going around to our irrigation wells and pulling the pumps and dropping a camera down. They're also flow testing those wells, checking the specific capacity and the chemistry. And the reason we're doing this is to assess the current condition of the wells and whether they need replacement in the future or what their lifespan is. And it'll give us some good data, and we have some data from when the wells went in that we can compare it to. And that way, we can trend it, whether the wells are losing productivity or staying the same. Couple purchase orders, and I'll just move to the installation of the remaining water and irrigation meters. And I'll give you an update on that and then let you open the floor up for any questions I might be able to answer. Of course, we hired US Water to install the remaining meters, and those were the larger ones, mostly two and three inch, one and a half inch meters. And they've been very slow. We kicked off the project on the 24th. And as of last Friday, they had installed thirteen meters. And some days, they were doing one or two, and we're out there with them. And on a good day, they got three. I think at their limit with their crew, they'll probably get four in a day. But I conveyed to them Friday and also this morning that I thought this was going to be a three to four week process, not a three to four month process.
Was that defined with them? Did we set expectations of completion?
Yeah, there is not. There was a purchase order issued for them to do that work. And when we met with them, that's what their representation was, three to four weeks, that they were going to do seven to ten a day. And after me talking to him this week, he said he was going to up his crew and that they were going to shoot for four to six.
But we don't have that in writing anywhere, right?
Yes, sir.
How many, how many meters are yet to...
We've got about eighty-four left. And we're concentrating on the irrigation meters now because the larger potable meters, Gardner Building, the schools, it's hard to shut them off in the middle of the day, so we're scheduling those for Saturdays and after hours. And, but we are going in and inspecting every installation, following that, activating the meter, and testing the meters. So that's what I have on the installation of the remaining meters and trying to get those in the ground and finish this portion of the project up. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions Mr. Newbauer might have on the meter project.
Oh, no, not Mr. Newbauer. You've got to, you've got to start down here on this end first.
I tried, I tried the donut diversion, but it failed miserably, so I'm reaching right now.
Go ahead.
So to summarize, we should understand that this is going to be another five and a half months before it's finished?
I don't think so. I think they're going to pick their pace up.
Oh, five months, very good.
But I'd, I'd be shooting, you know, realistically, Thanksgiving.
Snow will be flying?
And... But believe me, I'm putting, I'm putting pressure on them daily, and I call them and send them texts, and I'm getting ready to go up the chain of command. But they are working hard, and I will tell you that some of these meter boxes and the replacements, we had one on the meeting the other day, and they literally had to dig the whole concrete box up, and we had a huge hole in the ground. And it took the two guys, I mean, working about four hours to do that job.
So now, we're also going to, from what you just said, we've got to have staff available on the weekends as well? So we're paying them overtime, double time, yada, yada?
Yeah, well, some of it will be me too and, and some of the others.
Your staff, Chris, come on.
Hold on just one second, please. The description that you just gave us about digging all of that, would you please take some photos of what's going on while it's going on?
Sure. I have a few, just because it shocked me when I went and saw it. But with those larger boxes and you get roots and in those heavily vegetated areas, I mean, you're basically cutting it out because you can't move the box or the meter fittings without doing it.
The other question is, is back to Mr. Tinkles' thing.
Right.
Okay. This is a so what do you question?
So what do what?
Well, so what do you? So what do you have to say to what Mr. Tinkle had to say?
Well, I have not done exhaustive research on the contract verbiage that Mr. Tinkle has done. And he's spent a lot of time and a lot of effort. And I have actually been concentrating my effort on moving forward, getting the meters in the ground and fixing the problems. I think there's a lot of validity what he has to say. I, I wouldn't argue with most of it.
What would you argue with?
Well, it may be very, very minor points, but when, when they talk about a report that has twelve hundred errors on it, yes, such a report exists. Now, you might find three hundred of those were seasonal residents that aren't using a lot of water. And all of a sudden, it comes up on ours that there's no water use, so we have to go out and check it. But I would say that half of those are mechanical issues of some sort, whether it's the ETR that's not sending correctly. We've had some instances where we've checked it, and the wires are crossed. So the reading coming from the irrigation meter is going to the potable billing side. So you get someone that calls about a bill for potable water with like eighty thousand gallons, and you know they're not using that. So on a case-by-case basis and other, other equipment, we check. And, and we have had a significant number of the ETRs go bad. And we've had a significant number of those sending units, the MIUs that are bad, and the batteries in them. And the contractor said, "Well, were these stored upside down because the lithium will decharge?" I said, "I don't know. They weren't in our factory, but we're replacing them." And Fordaline is replacing the parts under warranty.
Can we, can we just let this go until all the meters are installed and operating perfectly and then get a complete report on this thing from you and our engineers and everybody? This partial stuff doesn't appeal much to me.
Unappealing as it may be, the point is, is we now are still faced with, the stuff that's being done now is, is the latter part. We're back to the first part. And you've got a minimum of twenty-two percent that are defective, if not more. My question is, with your expertise and experience, is this normal? Number two, if it isn't, if it is normal, I'm rather shocked and appalled that we take on something like this and this is the quality, or, and I put quality in quotes, that we're expected to take. Additionally, the ninety-four thousand dollar figure that Ed Tinkle came up with in costs of our staff, I mean, what's the point of waiting till the end? We've got a problem right here and right now.
And it's not only that staff cost, but when you put defective meters in, when they register defectively, then there's lost revenue, there's us having to go back and, you know, either we're going to eat some of that or we're going to, you know... So there's loss up and down this project. And I think we won't know the, the extent of that until the project is complete. But I would, I would say feed off this report, whether it's Tetra Tech or Chris, you or staff. And let's, let's get our pencils out and see how much staff cost has been attributed, how much loss of revenue, if we've had to come out of pocket, which we have, not only with Tetra Tech, but also with the, I think with purchase of the additional meters. It seemed like there's like eighteen grain or something that I'm remembering. So when we come up with that total, you know, that, that, that total bill or that identified items, then when we sit down with, with Fordaline to settle this thing up, that's where the withholding of the, of the final payment comes in. But if it's in excess, or, you know, I just think we don't, we don't need to wait till the end to start assessing and understanding the severity of this, because this is a huge amount of money that we've spent. This is a huge project. And I, I appreciate the fact that, that since you've come on board, you're putting checks and balances in place, you're holding people accountable, even with other things that you're managing. At some point, we have to learn how to, how to run these projects and hold our vendors accountable. So if there is, if at this point, if you feel it is responsible to pull in the heads of our vendors and say, "Okay, we're eighty, eighty-five percent through seventy-five. Here's the things that need to happen in order to get us to the finish line, improve accountability." And I do have one question around Ed's comment around doing an audit. Didn't Zennor do an audit? I mean, I think we, there was a recommendation to do...
I asked him for a bench test.
Okay. So what does a bench test do?
It tests the reader, verify it's accurate.
Okay. So, and that's not, was not part of what Zennor did? They didn't do a bench test when they were going through? So we don't know if they're, if they're reading correctly is what you're, what you're trying to find?
Yeah, and there's several, of course, portions of the meter, but he's, he's questioning the meter itself, the mechanical, not the transmitting equipment.
Right, okay. Yeah, I understand that. And is that something that you...
Yeah, we were, we were talking to him about that, and several people in the area do those things. We'll pull the meter out and go test it, and then at least you can put one potential defect event. But every week, and it's, it's a case-by-case basis, customer account by account, we're clearing more out than we're getting in, and we're hoping to get all these mechanical problems resolved. But it is a customer service nightmare. It causes the customers to lose confidence in us. I feel better about the revenue because in a lot of cases, we've had customers that have gotten a thirty-five dollar, you know, bill, which is just the base for five or six months. And then when that ETR starts working and we see all those gallons, you know, we send them a letter and tell them, you know, "You used sixty thousand gallons over this time." And a lot of the people are surprisingly understanding because they said, "Yeah, I wonder why my bill was so low. I was only paying the base." And I had one fellow tell me, he said, "Well, it took you six months to find this and figure it out." He goes, "Then I'm going to take six months to pay it." And I said, "Well, that's okay, but you're going to pay it." So they're surprisingly understanding, but it's, it's difficult.
And one of the things that I would just add to that is when we look at our staff calls, I'm sure we've had an increase in customer service calls, which we don't have a thick customer service department. Matter of fact, we've got people that are doing multiple roles. So if, if they have to come off other responsibilities to assume customer service roles, that's an impact in, in staff responsibility. So I would calculate that into, you know, some of, you know, impacts that we've had and that. So, I mean, I would, this is, this is unacceptable. And I appreciate you, you know, you've done a lot in getting us on track, but we still can't forget about everything that's happened up to this point.
Sure. And to answer Mr. Newbauer's question, in a typical meter installation project, you would probably, similar to computers, have one, two, up to four percent, you know, defective units, defective equipment. So we've had, you know, quite a high number.
Yeah, so from one to two, we're looking at twenty-two. Isn't it? And furthermore, I think that the ladies that have to put up with this type of situation, which you alluded to, not just the fact of multitasking, but the fact of just the drama that they have to put up with, I think it's time for a free lunch here someplace along the way to try to say thank you.
Well, that three percent increase that we gave next year doesn't sound so bad now.
No, it doesn't, but I, I think some type of...
They're earning it, trust me.
A heck of a long way, et cetera. Same, and might as well, an extra sandwich for Chris, too, you know?
Well, I, I had one fellow tell me, he said, you know, "After reviewing all this, I have to say that I, I think people are incompetent and incapable of doing this work." And I looked at him and I said, "Sir, I'm not going to argue with you, but give us another strike."
Why don't, as we've kind of bounced back and forth, both Ed and Doug and I, why don't we get these people in here and have them have...
What people? What people?
The people that are responsible, I, Fordaline, the suppliers, et cetera, that were taking their defective stuff, and we, in fact, they're impervious to all of this emotion that goes on.
We had a nice presentation when they were sitting.
Wasn't that something?
It really was. I don't remember twenty percent probably not working being part of that presentation.
I really don't think so. So what I'm saying is, is isn't it time to try to get them to hear?
I ask Chris, I mean, this is, this is wheelhouse. This is his project. He's, he's only announced, and he's accountable from this, from when he came on board to moving forward, whether he likes it or not. But we understand there's, there's things that happened before.
So it's all your fault, Chris?
What do you, you know, what do, what do you need and what is your actions moving forward? I mean, do you feel like bringing, bringing these vendors in to put pressure on them would do anything?
No, and, and we put pressure on them regularly. We're, we talk to them, you know, almost daily, the Fordaline people. We're still ordering parts from them and exchanging defective parts. And, and the people at Zennor, we did have with our last reading, ninety-nine point five percent reads on the system, which is very acceptable in the industry standards. So that part, you know, we have up to snuff. It's the meters in the ground and some of the, you know, damages that happen. But I, I would have to concur with Mr. Guy. I think that once we wrap it up and do it universally and so address all those issues, and I think the vendors would be more comfortable too, because then they'd say, "Okay, it's going to stop here." You know, we're not going to go beat them up and then call them back in another couple of months and beat them up again.
I don't know that I care about their comfort.
Well, they, believe me, we've made them quite a comfortable...
We want them to speed up, not slow down. I guess, but like I said, I lean on you, Chris. But, I mean, if it was me, I, I would have called them in breach probably two months ago.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, we're ready for, for supervisor comments. Doug?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
I have one thing, and that's just that I wanted to let the board know and the residents know that the Florida Department of Transportation is having a public information meeting.
Can I pass these to the other members?
Yeah, between five thirty and seven today at, I only have three, so.
I have one already. I got one in the mail.
You got one in the mail?
Yeah.
Did you hear that? I found this in the newspaper.
Really?
Yeah, it's on the widening of St. Road eighty-two. Yeah, they're having an enthusiasm. The New Life Assembly of God, that's located on Leonard Boulevard, which is the street that runs just parallel to State Road eighty-two on the other side of the road from Stony Brook. It may be worth your while if you're interested in the widening and what they're planning on doing. Any complaints, concerns, questions that you might have? I'm planning on going out there. I wanted to ask some questions myself.
May I?
You may.
Is that all you have?
That's it.
Mr. Newbauer?
On this packet of information that we got, which I know you all reviewed, I find it ironic on page ten. One of those restaurants that's over there that's not, that's not paying the electricity actually had the gall to put up their sign on our soccer field.
Oh, you can't, you can't say that.
Oh, yes, I could, and I just did.
Some little kid could have just put that up, dude.
Funny, isn't it? And then on seventeen, I note, on item number six C, there's the Fairway Lakes Office Park Monument, and it says, "Staff will research ownership and responsibility of the sign and the light fixtures." And then it says, "Item complete." What does that mean?
I'm not absolutely sure why Justin actually put "complete" on that one. There seems to be some sort of back and forth in that area about some of the lighting. I guess because it's an older area, some of the lighting we're responsible for, some of the lighting we're not responsible for down there. So that's what we need to research.
So it isn't complete?
No, it's, it's on my follow-up list, but, but I'm not sure. I mean, you know, he's cutting and pasting when he, when he goes in there. We had a lot of, of comments this time and a lot of feedback, so it might have just been a, an error. But it's definitely on our, our radar to follow up on that.
Mr. Newbauer, is it him? Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? Thank you very much for your hard work. Thanks for coming. Our next meeting is October sixteenth.
We are adjourned. Don't know, but you know that it's scheduled by April, and as well, he's wrong anyway.
Does he go over this week?
Well, then what's the point before we're being here?
I guess it's a question, are we?
It's all part of it.
Did it sign? Did you talk with the lighting on the sign?
Okay, so what is it?
I'm doing fine.